Let's go to the meeting order. Stand for the slide to relieve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Me too. Me too.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everybody. At the mayor's office, we probably need a motion to excuse the mayor. And this is me, Zach.
Well, it's the mayor first.
Yeah, let's do the mayor first. Can we get a motion to excuse the mayor?
Speak up a little bit, sir.
We get a motion to excuse the mayor from tonight's meeting? You got to keep track there. Yeah. Sandy and Wally. Clerk, call the roll.
We're going to call, we're going to excuse the mayor, call the roll.
Excuse them. We're not doing all of us, so we'll be doing one at a time. Whatever. You call the meeting order. Okay.
Louhori?
Here.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Or here, whatever.
Here. Speaks? Here. Meezak, Junus?
Here.
Do we get a motion to excuse the mayor from tonight's meeting? Sandy and Wally.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
Need a motion to excuse Mrs. Meezak from the meeting tonight? Same thing.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
And then procedurally, we need a motion to appoint Mr. Saunders as the most seasoned person up here as council president pro temp. Can we get a motion to that effect to preside over the meeting tonight? Should we get a motion to that effect?
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
Okay. Now I'm official. All right. We need a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of May 6th, 2019. Heather? Wally? Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
All right, we need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 6th, 2019. Vic? Sandy? Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
And we need a motion for approval of the minutes in a public hearing of May 6th, 2019. Sandy and Wally. Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
All right, we have no presentations tonight, so we will go right into old business, which the first, let's see, all three of these were tabled. So we're going to keep them on the table because the planning commission's here. Public hearing is tomorrow, I believe. So we'll probably see these move at the next meeting. So we don't have to.
No, sure.
I didn't think so. All right. The next section, which is D, that's for the street lighting. That will have to go on second reading. Do we have a motion for that, for the first one? Or I should have John.
I can read it real quick for the next one. These next three motions have three, well, the resolution, the next two ordinances have to do with the street lighting costs to the city. So the first one is Resolution Number 2533-19, which is declaring the necessity to approve certain streets in the city by lighting the same, pretty, declaring an emergency. So this would be given a second reading.
All right, do we have a motion for second reading? Heather? And Wally?
Second reading, Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
Next ordinance?
Is Number 9689-19, which is an ordinance determined to proceed with the improvement of certain streets in the city of Bedford by lighting the same and declaring an emergency.
Do we have a motion for second reading? Sandy? Wally? Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Then ordinance 9690?
-19, which is an ordinance loving special assessments for the improvements of the street and public places of the city by lighting the same in accordance with the prior resolution and the ordinance we just referred to and declaring an emergency.
I have a motion for second reading. Heather? And Vic?
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
All right. Resolution 2534-19
is a resolution approving and accepting the proposed 2019 tax budget for the year January 1st, 2020 to December 31st, 2020, as determined by our finance director and declaring an emergency.
And I have a motion for second reading on this. Wally? And Sandy? Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
All right. Resolution Number 2535
is a resolution requesting the county auditor to advance taxes from the proceeds of tax levies for the year 2019 collected in 2020 pursuant to Section Number 321.34 of the Ohio Vice Code of the State of Ohio to allow us to get taxes sort of sooner than we make, before they're all collected, and declaring an emergency.
Clerk, call the roll. Oh, okay. We need a second reading motion. Do we have Heather? And Sandy?
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance 9692
is an ordinance, an ordinance to levy assessments for the expense of garbage and refuse collection, recycling and disposal within the city of Bedford during the tax year 2019, which will be collected in 2020, and declaring an emergency.
I need a motion for second reading on that one, too. Heather? And Wally? Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
No.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
All right. Now we come down to reports. City manager? Thank you. Just have a couple of items. One being that the railroad crossing, as it's on our website, that did go out, various media outlets, is closed today. It'll be closed for five days. They're making necessary repairs to those tracks. In addition, Rockside Road repairs, that water main has been fixed, and they're now working on the roadway repairs. So we did permit that rail closing to go forward. We had previously asked them to delay it. Due to Rockside, being that that was opened up to suitable traffic, we permitted that project of the rail to proceed. So they should be completed by the end of this week. As mentioned earlier, we do have a planning commission public hearing tomorrow. That public hearing is to discuss the extensive rezoning of Nuttall Brook and all of the property that was formerly zoned retail. It's our intention, and I believe the planning commission's intention, to get that switched over to a mixed use, which will further allow future development. So that meeting is tomorrow night. Also a reminder that on Monday, there'll be the Memorial Day ceremony. That parade starts at City Hall at 10:15. It will go down to the square and then ultimately over to the cemetery. And I did one, or Councilwoman Meezak asked me to send her well wishes. She was unable to be here this evening due to being hospitalized after a fall. She's doing better, but that's why she's unable to be here. And she wished everyone well, and hopefully she'll be back soon. End of report. All right, Wally?
I've got no report. And I hope everyone enjoys the long weekend.
Finance director, even though he's out of town, we have Jen, his assistant, here tonight.
I have no report tonight.
Okay. Council reports. Okay. Vic?
Well, let's see. I got, I want the award here. The Wild Cable Company are digging already for that telecommunication cabin that they're putting in on Henry Street. They've got it started already. They've also chopped down some of the grass over there, which helps that area to keep and dig, keep care of that grass, which will really be a big help. I'll also remind everybody, or announcement, that June 1st, at the Bedford High School, there's a ceremony for Coach Lefler, for renaming the baseball complex. It's 10 o'clock in the morning on Saturday. We got a lot of former players. He coached for 32 years. He lives in Florida, so he's coming up that weekend. We're going to have a nice ceremony out there. I'm going to be emceeing it, so I'm one of his 500 ballplayers that he had through the years. And so this is something we should have done a long time ago, but finally got it done. And anybody that's interested, or if you know anybody related to you that played baseball for Coach Lefler, it'd be nice to have him come up. I've had people from 1906 to '04 already call me. His first year that he coached, so this should be a pretty good ceremony. It's June 1st, 10 o'clock, Saturday morning. Rain or shine, if the rains are born in our village, Jim. There are flyers underneath that I put by the podium. Yeah, I put them by the podium. But rain or shine, rains, because he's not coming back up again, so this will be done one way or the other. I've been doing this for 10 months already, and I'm ready to get it over with. And they usually get somebody's name put on a building or on a wall or whatever. You have to do a lot of scraping and clawing. And, but the school board and everybody up there did a good job, and they all agreed, and it was time to get this done. Man that went to school here, played here, coached here, his whole life has been in Bedford at that time. So it'd be a nice ceremony, a nice morning to have Coach and all his former players and coaches and everybody else, and some family, friends, and whatever come up. So, end of report.
All right, Heather?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for coming. I appreciate seeing you. We actually have another large crowd tonight, so. First of all, I wanted to thank everyone who came out for the Garden Club plant sale. I very much appreciate it. We had a nice turnout. If you're interested in joining Garden Club, we'd love to have you. We have a lot of projects that we do around the city. Mainly like the one that's really, I want to point out right now, is the City Hall Garden right out the front. The Bedford Garden Club worked really hard this weekend to get that all ready for Memorial Day. And we do projects all over the city like that. We'd love some volunteers who could help with that. I'd also like to let you know that the Bedford Downtown Alliance Doers Meeting is the 22nd, that's this Wednesday, at 7:00 PM at Bedford Falls Cafe. We've rebranded our volunteer meeting from stakeholders to doers is because of the fact that we have graduated our first year past a couple of months ago. We are still around. We are still doing things. We are accomplishing things. We would love your help to be able to accomplish those things. To that end, we will be doing a cleanup of the Denham House. Garden Club already did a little bit of work this past weekend on the Denham House. This next weekend, we are going to finish the cleanup. We're going to put some mulch down, plant some flowers, pull some weeds, maybe even paint some things. If you'd like to help out with that, that will be on the 25th at 1:00 PM at the Denham House in downtown Bedford. I'd also like to remind everyone that the playground program is still open for people to sign up for this summer. It's an excellent program. My own son attends the playground program. It's $500, right? 500? For the summer. And I can tell you that they do the same things as when my kids were going to a daycare center that costs $250 a week for the summer. They go on field trips. They get to go swimming. They get to play. They do crafts. They do a lot of fun stuff. If you have a child in the area that you would like to enroll into the playground program, you can go to the rec center and sign them up. And you can either sign them up for only half the summer or for the full summer. You can do either one. If you sign up, of course, for half the summer, you only pay half the price. The other thing, I believe the baseball is still open for enrollment if anybody is looking to sign their child up for baseball. And that's all I have this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather. Sandy?
Good evening. It's great to see everybody. It's really good to see my husband back in the audience, recovering as well. I had the honor of going to, I'm a mentor at Casket Middle School, and I had the honor of going to Ties and Tiara. Ties and Tiara is the graduation of the eighth graders going into the ninth grade. So it's a big deal. The girls get a tiara, the guys get a tie. It's a neat thing. And we also have a ceremony for our seventh graders that are going to be eighth graders next year. So a big thank you to Ms. Golden, which is the principal there, who started this. I've been blessed enough to be in this, involved in this, pretty much from the beginning. So this is my seventh year. It's been around for eight years. And it's just a great program, and it's kind of what the name says, UBU. It's teaching children to, you know, they're getting ready for high school to do themselves, not be coaxed into peer pressure. And we just, we teach them things. We go on field trips. We did four field trips this year, to the art museum. We went to World Involve. And we do educational stuff. We do fun stuff. We took them to the science center. And then we ended up this year taking the eighth graders to Cleveland State, which was very interesting. I was very boasting like a proud parent almost to my eighth grader. She's straight A's all through this year. And she got a small scholarship and got a big award. So I co-mentor her and was very, very proud of her for doing really well in school. All my girls ended up with good grades, so I'm very proud of them. Went on to city business. It's really good. Mazda has jumped in and start, they're starting to tear up the asphalt up there. So the bank's down. Now that's going on, so that's good to see that. They're out there working again today, so that's really good to see that. That's progress. It's a long time coming, but Mazda's moving forward, and we're going to see big things coming up, hopefully more this summer. The median, still working on Grand. They're kind of spot here and there. They're up by my house a lot. They're down by Declan's and stuff. It's pretty much a mess right there. So if you go down Grand, be prepared to stop because it's, they've been doing, I'll tell you what, they start at 7:00 in the morning, too. So they start, they're usually done by 5:00, but they've done a good job of doing what they're getting done. Have a happy Memorial Day weekend. End of report.
All right, Wally?
No report.
I saved myself for last, so. Anyway, same line that Sandy just mentioned up there at corner of Northfield and Rockside. Everybody's been complaining for years that nothing else seems to ever be going on there. And Mazda is one heck of a big addition over there. But if you read Cranes, they had a very big article as to what's going to be happening to the Walmart building here in Bedford. You need to read that article. If you don't get Cranes or can't get online for it, you can always look at my, I posted the article on my Facebook page, too. But it's going to be one heck of a nice company coming in over there, which should help the city's finances now for the next number of years, too. So that's a positive thing. That corner, I know everybody says it's going to take forever, but it takes a while, 18, 24 months or longer, just to redevelop some areas. So it's beginning. You're going to see a lot of changes here, hopefully, within the next year especially. It was mentioned by Heather, the Garden Club working on the City Hall Garden out front. I remember with Joyce, the day the building opened here, how many holes did we dig out there to plant all those plants? It seemed like we were digging holes for over a week. So it's good to see that garden being maintained. Some of us can't dig holes anymore like we used to, but it's always a good project to keep that going. And the Garden Club does a lot in this area, so they maintain several different areas. So I also want to mention the fact that since we won't have a council meeting before that, the rip burn off is a week from this coming Friday. That'll be in the square, so hope to see everybody out at that. That's usually a good event sponsored by the Rotary. So let's patronize some of our local organizations and show up for that. And one last question for Mike. This has to do with the Rockside Road overpass and the water main break. Are they going to replace that entire approach slab coming into the bridge since they cut holes into it and cut all the reinforcement that goes to it? Or are they just going to repair their approach slab instead of properly basically putting it back the way it should be?
Well, the notice that we, the notice that we got today was simply that they were beginning those repairs. If you recall, that was in Maple Heights, so there isn't a whole lot we have to say about it.
Well, that's true.
The county engineer's handling it, and he notified us that they're beginning those repairs. So the details of those repairs, we weren't privy to. I would hope the county engineer, you know, does the appropriate repair, does it the way it needs to be done. But I'm not, wasn't privy to the specifics of that being that it was outside of Bedford.
Yeah. Well, the approach slabs are much thicker than the pavement itself, and it actually has rebar in it. So I hope they do do it right, or they'll be back in four or five years redoing it because it breaks away and settles out. So that's the, all I have for my report. All right. Moving on to new business. Ordinance Number 9696.
All three of these will be on first reading due to the fact that we're missing two numbers tonight. Ordinance Number 9696-19 is an ordinance amending Ordinance Number 9653-18, which making additional appropriations for current expenditures of the city of Bedford during the year 2019 and declaring an emergency.
And I have a motion for first reading. Sandy? Wally? Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
All right. Ordinance Number 9697
is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with PVS Technologies, Inc. for liquid ferric chloride being the lowest response of an municipal bidder and declaring an emergency.
All right. We're going to have to put this on first reading, too. So I need a motion. Sandy and Vic? Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes. Ordinance Number 9698
is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Senior Transportation Connection and declaring an emergency.
This is also going to go on first reading, so I need a motion for that. Heather? And Sandy? Clerk, call the roll.
Louhori?
Yes.
Saunders?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Speaks?
Yes.
Junus?
Yes.
All right. We've come to the portion of hearing of citizens. We ask anyone who's going to speak to please come up to the microphone because this meeting is being recorded now, so in order for you to be able to, or for us to be able to hear it and for the recording, you need to speak into the microphone. So please state your name and your address, and we'll go from there. This, Rich Novak.
Good evening, everybody. Rich Novak, 1252 Broadway. Couple of things tonight. One thing that I have some concerns about, this contract with Senior Transportation Connection. Is that to do with, is the senior transportation vehicle? And to have them contract through that? And I was wondering if you've done your homework on how on demand public transportation works?
Sure, we have. It actually would. Our goal is to expand the services provided to seniors and to actually be more efficient and more accommodating to the overall seniors in the community. So we have, I could go over some of the specifics and the stats if you'd like to afterward.
I would like to. I've spent 17 and a half years in that industry, and I happen to know these people and their contracts and how they operate. And I'm just wondering if they're going to be dedicating a vehicle to our, to our community? And where are they going to be coming out of? Because I know they're, they're out of North Olmsted, and they also have another location on West 150th. And I'm just wondering if they're going to be bringing vehicles from there to us? And how much are the seniors going to be paying? Because they do have to pay for.
The charge to the seniors wouldn't change. It'd be a dollar per way.
It'll be a dollar, so there's going to be no extra charge?
No extra charge. It's a dollar per way.
Okay.
If seniors wish to expand on that, right now we can accommodate weekends or in the evenings. If any of our seniors would wish to utilize that transportation on the weekends and evenings, they'll have the availability to call and get a ride. There may be a different fee for that outside of their normal business hours, but the hours that the service is provided now, there's no additional charge. Senior radius, none of that. Actually, there's vehicles from this organization in Bedford now, accommodating some of our public now and bringing others in here as well. They accommodate, I think they work with about 30 different municipalities throughout the area. So, yeah, I could give you some of the specifics.
I'm just concerned because of the fact that their size, number one, I'd just be concerned because of the fact that their size, number one, and being that it's a government agency the way they contract. And how, you know, how much service are we gonna get from them? Because I know there's companies right here in Bedford that do offer the same service and, you know, and do have a lot of vehicles. And that's, I was just concerned about that and I would like to talk about that just due to the simple fact, you know, you're dealing with another government agency here and, and I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but the situations where there's a Medicaid run, that your request is gonna be put behind that. And I don't know if you have that in contract or not, because that's the way they operate. So if we have two runs going out to dialysis in one of our citizens calls, they're gonna be put to the bottom of the list just due to the fact that that's how they operate. And, you know, maybe this contract that, I'd like to see it myself just to see if there's anything in there that I could point out to make sure that our citizens get taken care of. Okay?
This is on first reading, so there's still time for discussion on this too, but what this will allow for is our senior van right now, if it's out and doing a service and somebody else calls, they're stuck. So this should help alleviate some of that problem by providing multiple vehicles, but yes, we're, we're still open for discussion on this.
Yeah, I, I would like to, the only, like I said, the only reason is my experience in it, even though they've got, you know, fifty, sixty vehicles out there, I mean, they're servicing fifteen, twenty communities plus the RTA. Okay, so they can drop down to subcontractors or other people in the area to provide it. I don't know, I'd like to see if they, if they have that in the, in the contract or not, because at those points, then that, then our service does suffer. And I just wanna ensure that our seniors are taken care of basically in the community. So if I can help do that, I will. Number two, Strawberry Festival's coming up. My wife is not here tonight, she's out making calls trying to get some more volunteers. So if anybody out there wants to volunteer a little bit of time at the Strawberry Festival, either Friday, Saturday, or Sunday, or give me a hand park a cars, let me know, I'm here.
I've got you another sponsor, I think.
Beautiful.
So just so that you're aware of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? A big crowd and nobody wants to speak tonight, huh? Okay.
Orlando Rosario, two-five-seven Deborah Lane. Question to the city manager. I spoke to Ms. Miesak a while back about some situations that we have on streets Bel She did inform me that she did take care of it with the service garage and all I've seen is vehicles go up and down through those two roads, make other repairs on others, but leave our two roads stranded. What gives?
As far as, as far as repairs, are you...
Well, there's a couple of major chuck holes.
Hole patching holes.
Hole patching, major, major holes. And then next to my neighbor, by his fire hydrant, they dug up there and they went over to Glendale, dug up by that hydrant over there, fixed it, but yet my neighbor's hydrant is still sitting there with nothing and all the cars do is when they go by, they go and back over. I mean, that's very unsafe.
Well, as far as the, as far as the patch work and the, we've had, we have numerous day jobs that still have to get filled and paved over. We don't pave those in the winter months. Patching holes, we're going around the entire city, our crews are out now.
Well, I understand, I understand your point, but what my, my specific part of the point is, issue is, they go up and down our, our roads, round the cul-de-sac, turn and take off. That doesn't seem fair. I mean, even though I don't drive, but still, my neighbors, people that go up and down these streets, UPS drivers, all they do is run them over and make them worse. It's like, come on, if you're gonna go up and down the streets, at least stop and get out and do something.
Well, I, I will say, I, I can't answer any vehicles going up and down your streets. What I can say is I know our service guys are extremely busy, they're extremely hard workers and I don't think anybody's, if you're insinuating anybody's driving around not doing anything or slacking, that's not the case.
I see it.
I, I would vouch for that.
I, I see it, I see it.
That's fair, you're, you're entitled to that.
I mean, I see it, they come up and down in trucks, I've, I've seen them in golf cars. I'm usually out there, I mean, I see it and it's like, come on, man.
We don't, we don't have a golf cart, so I don't, I don't know if that...
Where those carts are they?
But actually, what you're referring to, what you're referring to is the four-wheel vehicle that, that was out.
Yeah.
We contract with a company that goes around and identifies for water leaks. They sound our system.
Okay.
So they, they work to identify leaks.
Okay.
So that's what you said, that is not one of ours and that's part of their procedure. We've been doing that and when we identify large leaks, we come back after the fact or repair, leaks that haven't surfaced, okay?
Okay.
We'll come back and make the necessary repairs. It's been very successful in minimizing our loss. Our numbers, I reported a couple meetings ago, are in the eighties, as far as eighty percent is what we're collecting and the amount that's billed. We haven't hit those numbers since the early two thousands. So we're doing a great job as far as the water system. As far as the, the service workers driving around in trucks, I, you know, again, I, I'm gonna vouch for them. I, I know they're extremely busy, you know, they're, they're working to make the repairs. We have numerous work orders that we have to take care of, so I, I don't, I'm gonna vouch for them and say they're not slacking off. You're entitled to your opinion, I appreciate your comments, but...
Well, I know Paula's put them in because I know she has. She's reported them. She's called me and told me, said she's turned the, the orders in, so, you know, I mean, like she said, she'd like to see some stuff done in her work too.
Fair enough.
So I, I mean, you know, well, whatever the case may be, I, I mean, at least they can do something. So what are you saying about the hydrants? Is there any chance of them, of that one getting repaired?
Yeah, it's, she's probably scheduled to be repaired or replaced.
Okay.
We, we repaired fifty-plus last year, repaired or replaced fifty-plus between our, our fire and our water department, but I can tell you the water department and fire department work hand in hand. If there's a fire hydrant that's out, our fire department's aware of that and it's not gonna disrupt any safety as far as their response because there's another fire hydrant in the immediate vicinity that would provide adequate flow and that would be addressed.
Okay.
So we're, we're aware of what needs to get repaired and replaced. They tackled a lot last year, more than we have in previous years and we'll continue to get those, those fixed out or switched out. I can assure you it's on our list and they're gonna get to it.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Yes, sir, Rosario.
Yes, sir.
I wanted to give you my condolences on the loss of your service dog, so hopefully you'll be able to get another one so that you can get around a little bit better, but I did wanna give you my condolences on that.
Thank you, sir. I'm just kinda gonna put it in God's hands right now and see what he says, you know, go from there. But thank you very much, appreciate it. Thanks, Mike.
Anyone else?
Jeff, two over one thirty-four, Herron. I was hoping to be a full council. I wanted to give these to... I know that you're always looking for people to give commendations to. And what I've given you is a kind of pamphlet cover from the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association and what it identifies is kind of a career ladder deal. And first of all, I want to correct Mike, we don't have a fire department in this town, unless they change the charter. Anyways, the, the designations on here are areas that a progression, that a fire professional can get into. And I want to point your attention to the third one from the top where it says FOIP, which is Fire Officer Four, Ohio Fire Executive. The Ohio Fire Executive is a executive development class and it's a two and a half year program started twenty years ago and they just graduated to seventeen class from that, from that program. And it's not a class where you sit in there and take a few tests and then get a certificate for it. There's an application process to get into the class and not everyone is accepted, not everyone who applies is accepted into the class. We've had people from, from here who have not gotten into the class. And there's no other state program in the country that's equivalent of this program. So this is, and they've been recognized as such. They, they put in two hundred classroom hours and then four hundred hours, at least four hundred hours of out of class work. And they have to do a series of papers, probably around eight papers, including an applied research project. And then this is graded and they have to have a passing grade on that applied research project. So the reason I bring this in, there's been three hundred and sixty-six graduates of this program and these graduates represent forty-three of the counties, forty-three of Ohio's counties. And there's been twenty-four graduates from Cuyahoga County. And in, in Bedford, there are five graduates of, of this program. And I think that, you know, Stan always talks about recognizing people for, for accomplishments. This is a career development program which is like no other and I think that, I know that you were supposed to do a recognition of the fire department next month, so I wanted to get this out this month and just let you know that there are five deserving people on this department who have gone over and above in career development aspect and have, have reached this accomplishment of the OFE designation. Thank you.
I think that's probably one of the reasons also that our ISO rating went down to a two, which should help everyone in their fire insurance when your homeowner's policies are renewed the next time. We have one heck of a department and they're well-known across the state. I think we can definitely look into that and see what we can do when we have the rest of the two. All right, anyone else?
Good evening, Frank Dome, twelve twenty-two Broadway. I have a question about the tax levy that was passed four or five years ago that we had here in Bedford. We were told that it was to help keep the senior van going and it was to help to keep the pool open. Excuse me. With this, what you're looking into with the senior van, my question is, if, if it goes to that, I mean, the money that people are paying on taxes were to help this out, so what, what, what happens there? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm lost in this, you know, money situation, how it goes or how it was supposed to go.
Quickly, the, the tax, the tax levy, I think you're referring to is the, the Safety Forces Levy that was in oh eight.
Okay.
So it was longer than five years ago. So we talked about at that time, you're correct, we were gonna, you know, they were talking about closing the pool.
Right.
Relining so many, I think, service workers. I don't know if we talked about police and fire, I don't think so, but I think it was to earmark that money specifically for police and fire, so it relieved the general fund of the amount of money that had to subsidize those entities. So what we're, as we've talked about here, the goal of this is not to cut that program whatsoever, but sometimes there's other entities that can provide a better service and that can serve more of our public than what we're serving now. And I get it, there's a personal aspect to it, but this isn't viewed, shouldn't be viewed as a cut in service by any means. It should be viewed as, you know, what we're theoretically going to be paying is about the same as what we're paying now. It would be paid to an entity that theoretically can provide a better service. There would be more than one van potentially in the community. There would be more opportunities if someone wants to call on a Wednesday when we're booked up theoretically during large parts on Monday, Wednesday, Friday, thank you Orlando, where they can get you on, even though they say, they may still be accommodating those individuals that have those static schedule. If whoever calls during that time that we can't accommodate now, they will be able to accommodate. So the goal is to provide a service for more of our community. And if it means that looking on the outside and allocating the money outside to an entity that can theoretically provide a better service than we do, that's kind of what we're looking to do.
So, so that's what the city's looking at, is to subsidize this outside group with the money from this city that city takes in from the taxes?
Yeah, we're not, I mean, it's not, it's not, it would be a contract, correct? It would be a contract with them. So it's not, we're not cutting the, we're not getting rid of, I mean, we're not not providing van service. There is going to be a van service. It's gonna be performed by another entity that, you know, on paper, we believe they can offer more of a variety, more opportunities, more seniors can have the availability to get to where they need to go and us not be as booked up as we are. And if you look at, I mean, and I'll be more than happy to share some of the data and I, I get it, I mean, there's certain things that, you know, are very pressing, medical issues. You look at, you know, seventy percent of our van service is, is medical, I think sixty-nine percent, or seventy percent is medical, I believe sixty-one percent is dialysis. And I feel for those individuals, I really do. With thirteen thousand total population here, I think our dialysis patients, I'm not sure if we're transporting fifteen, maybe twenty of them, somewhere around there. So it's, and, and, I mean, it's, so twenty, twenty individuals, sixty-some percent of the time for that van, is that the best use of those funds? Could those funds go to another entity that can provide more vans, more opportunities for our entire public, including those that need that now?
Yeah.
I mean, that's sensitive to all of our hearts, but if it means kind of saying, you know what, someone can do it better than we do, then that's what we're looking to do.
Okay, but has it been looked into? I mean, we have two senior vans, is a, is a possibility to have two senior vans on the road to help, you know, to help this problem?
It, it would, you would, it would increase obviously staffing and it would increase, it wouldn't, from a financial aspect, make sense to do that. When you talk about bringing on another employee, the benefits with that, with an employee, additional fuel, maintenance, repairs, it, it, it wouldn't make sense to do that.
And that's even in comparison with the contract you would have with an outside? Thank you.
Good questions. All right, anyone else? Seeing no others, I have a motion for adjournment. Clerk, call the roll.
Loebert.
Yes.
Saunders.
Yes.
Rhodes.
Yes.
Spinks.
Yes.
Junus.
Yes.